See one call in users that, or we have a couple of call in users now. Either of those trustee Kums Ismail? Can anyone, everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, good. That's, that's one less problem, potential problem for the night. I believe we have all the trust, board of trustees members that we anticipate this evening. And it looks like we have town staff and a good public turnout. So I say we call to order this work session and thank you, everyone for coming out. This work session, the goal is really to look at where we are in the process of interviewing and hiring a new town administrator to replace our current one, Karen Garrity, in a couple of months. And at this point, we've had, we narrowed things down from the original, I believe it was 15, I think it was 15 applicants that we got to the position. We narrowed that to seven that had met all the qualifications and requirements of the position. And I want to thank the members of our hiring committee who took a look at those seven and scored them, rated them, and determined which of those we thought was a good fit for Netherland and should be interviewed, which we then narrowed that down to the two candidates we interviewed last week on two separate days. I want to thank both, I don't believe either of them are here, but I want to thank, oh, wait, Miranda, you are here. I want to thank Miranda Fisher and also Ray Reers, who I know isn't here, but I was able to speak to earlier today. I want to thank them both for taking the time out last Thursday and Friday to meet first with the board of trustees online and a virtual interview, which I know has been viewed a lot since then. And then on Friday, when they got a chance to meet with the department chairs, town staff, and members of the public at the community center. So that's kind of where we are in the process. And really, the decision we're looking at during this work session is a chance for the board of trustees to talk about what we've seen, what we've heard, what we think our next step should be. And really, if we are ready this evening to move forward with selecting during, during the meeting, not during the work session, selecting a new town administrator and putting forth an offer for that position to one of the two candidates. So I think, did I miss anything, Karen? Jennifer? Jennifer Madsen? I think that's kind of the process, the position we are now. Or trustee Kums Ismail, I was the other board of trustees representative on the hiring committee. Did I miss any of the details? Or I don't think so. I think that was pretty complete.
It does cover it. This is Jennifer.
Okay. One thing I do just want to kind of take a moment to, to address is there is some misinformation, longstanding misinformation brought up over the weekend that indicated a, or suggested a possible conflict of interest for some members of the board of trustees. We've addressed this multiple times in the past. And I just want to be clear and have each trustee here with us this evening make a statement for the record and for the public about our ability to judge on this issue and to, to be fair on this. You know, obviously, we have all worked with one of the two candidates. And so for, you know, there's no, I see no reason why I can't be fair and impartial in discussing these next steps. I'm not going to direct, receive any direct financial benefit from the hiring of either of the candidates before us. And although I know and have worked with one of the candidates in her role as town clerk and deputy town administrator, it is a professional, not a personal relationship. So I'd just like to open up floor so that each of the other trustees can address the fact, address whether or not they believe they can be far, fair and impartial, or if they have any potential conflicts of interest in this decision or this discussion before us this evening. So trustee apt?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I do not have any conflicts of interest. My only relationship, as the mayor said, is with one of the candidates in her role, her current role as clerk and deputy administrator. I have no personal relationship with her. And I have no business benefits to be garnered from hiring either candidate. And I do not own a business in Netherland. And somebody said I needed to get a, a town business license. I have nothing in the way of a business that would have, would make that appropriate. I have no retail sales of my guidebooks, nor do I do any writing for hire. I'm a author of guidebooks in my retirement, and that's the extent of my business interest in Netherland. And I will be completely fair and impartial. And I believe we have two very strong candidates.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Kums Ismail?
Yes, I believe I can be fair and impartial, and I do not have any conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Eric. Trustee Taylor?
I am able to make this decision impartially. I have no conflicts of interest. And I think it's, it would, it is odd to believe that merely knowing one of the candidates would comprise essentially a conflict of interest. It belies a failure to understand how adults make decisions. I have no conflicts of interest.
Julian? Trustee Danforth?
Yes, I believe that I can be fair and impartial in discussing the next steps for the town administrator position and the ultimate decision to hire a town administrator. I have no business in Netherland. Do own a long-term rental that as soon as the town required that to be registered, that that evening, it was printed off and submitted to the town to register that long-term rental. So clearly not a business and not a conflict of interest. And I will not receive any direct financial benefits from the decision to hire either candidate.
Thank you, Lindsay. And trustee Corvallin?
I, yeah, I have no conflict of interest either.
Thank you very much. So yeah, this is a sort of an open work to set, work session and discussion. So I'm just gonna, I'd like to hear from all the trustees regarding the process to date. If you think there's something more that needs to be done, or if you feel that we are in a position to start discussing candidate, a candidate decision, both, you know, we can have a discussion about the, the process, things we've heard during the interview session, things we've read in their resumes, or we can also then have that during tonight's board meeting as an action item where, of course, any decision will be made. Tanya, I heard you just come off of mute. Do you want to start us off?
All right. Shouldn't we have John Baumhoffer weigh in on this decision before we put it on the agenda? And?
Did we lose you?
And I think we're gonna be in a situation. Oh, do you hear me?
No, you're, you're breaking up pretty badly. I think we lost most of the last couple of sentences there.
I didn't hear.
Got you right now. Oh.
My signal, my, too bad. I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
Do you guys hear me now?
Can't really understand. We're getting like, I think I heard you say, can you hear me now? Is that what you said? I, I, we're not really picking you up. I heard that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll come back to Tanya here. Trustee Taylor?
Yeah, I agree with Tanya on this. This is a win-win situation. There aren't any bad choices here. I was on vacation through the decision-making process. I couldn't be more impressed with the results of the committee that was put together to select these people. And I watched the YouTube video, so I saw the two and a half hours of interview and discussion and was tremendously impressed with both of these people. This is, this is a very, very difficult decision, but it's because we have, we have a festival of excellence. And yeah, I'm, I'm ready to vote tightly.
Okay. Thank you, Julian. Alan?
I concur. I think the, the process has been really good. It's, it's included all the elements that are necessary, including extensive public outreach and public input. And I would concur that we have two top-notch candidates and really can't go wrong. So the, the main challenge will be picking one of them, since they're both quite well-qualified. So, but I think it's, I, I'm kind of feeling like we should move forward.
Thank you, Alan. Lindsay, trustee Danforth?
Yeah, I think this has been a great process so far. And the, the two candidates that we've ended up with, it's a win-win. Whoever we end up with, I think will be good for the town. And I enjoyed being a part of the interviews last Thursday and hearing what the candidates had to say. And like I said, just truly impressed with both. And so, yeah, I think, I think I'm ready to move forward and put this to a vote.
Thank you, Lindsay. Trustee Kums Ismail, fellow member of the hiring committee?
Yeah, I agree with everyone. Two extremely strong candidates. I think that. That makes it very difficult. We're ready to go to a vote and not really talking about the candidates themselves. So I assume we might do that further into this work session. But I, I myself would find it challenging to, to vote one way or the other at this very moment. But I do think that we should continue, obviously, with the process and that we do have very strong candidates and whoever is voting will go.
Thank you, Eric. Tanya, do you have a better signal now?
Larson, Tanya just let me know that her signal is not great. Now, I typically disable the chat. She is asking if I can enable it so that she can share her comment.
Sure. Let's give that a try.
Trustee Corvallin, if you're there, it's reopened.
I think I just want to hear it now or no? Does that hear you guys? Perfect.
We actually can hear you right now.
Okay. Well, I mean, what about waiting for Jonathan Baumhoffer before a vote? Is he gonna be here today or at the next meeting?
I believe we have asked, we did, when we did the quorum count for the meetings in June, Mayor Protem Baumhoffer indicated that he would not be in attendance at either of the meetings in June.
Okay, so he has no interest in this vote then, I guess? All right. Then I guess we're gonna discuss about the candidates a little bit more in this meeting, I suppose?
Yeah, it's kind of the next step. I was just curious if, you know, if each trustee felt that the process, if there were any missing pieces of the process?
Yeah, no, I think the process, I, I was just hoping we'd all be present for the vote, but if, if you can't, I understand. Okay. Then let's move on with the vote if we, if we, yeah, sure.
Okay. And while I've got you on a good signal here, you know, that we, do we want to have this, start this discussion now on the candidates? Or do we want to wait for that during, during the tonight's meeting? I mean, we have pretty good turnout here.
I would love to put my opinion in this minute, if you're hearing me.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was, starting with you. You have a good signal. Go for it.
I, I didn't want to hear, but I want to say, I think.
I think we cursed ourselves by saying you had a good signal.
She's a great candidate. I want to say with all respect. Shoot.
Yeah, we can't. Yeah, we can't understand anything right now.
As far as. Um. Chat.
Sure. Why don't you, why don't you try putting on chat and we'll, we'll come back to you and see if we got a better signal again, since we apparently get you in 30-second chunks.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right. Trustee Danforth?
I'm sorry. So the, the question before us is to discuss this, further discuss the candidates at this moment in this work session versus doing it at the DOT meeting?
You know, yeah, it sounded like, from what I understood, people are ready to move forward. So I say, I think we can start discussing, we obviously can't make a decisions, but we can start discussing the candidate, the two candidates we have before us right now. And then if we run out of time, we will obviously move it into the action item tonight and probably have more discussion there as well. So yes, discussing the, the choices and weighing in.
Yeah, I, I think that we could discuss in this meeting, but I would like to have kind of a recap of, you know, our points and our feelings in the next meeting as well so that we can, so people don't feel like they've missed out.
I think that's a really good thing. Yep. And actually, maybe before we start as trustees, sort of laying out our views and what our current thinking is, one thing I did want to summarize, and I, I passed this to trustee Kums Ismail last night, because he and I were both listed as points of contact from members of the public, all, as well as town department chairs and town staff who attended the meetings or viewed the interviews and wanted to weigh in on the, the decision. And we've got very good turnout in terms of responses. I think we got about 16, I think, is the count I saw, letters or emails, emails reaching out to us, weighing in on the two candidates. And of those, of those 15 emails, 14 of them had a clear choice of one of the two candidates. They were both very, all the emails were very happy about the choices we had. They thought we had a very good candidates. And 14 of them were strongly for one or the other. And by my count, and correct me here, Eric, if I missed any, but by my count, it was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine of the emails we got were in support of Miranda Fisher, including all of the members of town staff and department heads who attended. And five, five emails came in and strongly in support of Ray Reers. We did also have one email that was in support of both of them and had agreed with us that we have a very difficult decision before us because they are both exceptional candidates. And I think both of them would do incredible things for the town of Netherland in the coming years. And this person recognized that very clearly by not being able to really decide one or the other. But of the others, it was nine that came in for Miranda and five for Ray. So I just wanted to share that piece of information since it was sent to Eric and I. And of course, those emails are available to anyone, those emails of support are available to anyone who'd like to see them. So Eric, so are you coming off of mute there?
I was just gonna say that that's accurate according to my count, just to verify what you said.
Good, yeah. It was, you know, they kept coming in over the weekend and I was trying to keep a, keep a log going as they did. So really, I want to thank all 15 people who wrote us. Thank you for weighing in, as well as, you know, the people who just stopped me around town this weekend and gave their opinion, opinion verbally. So thank you for all, all of you for that. Anyway, trustee Danforth, you want to kick off sort of your thoughts on the candidates? And we can start this discussion, we'll all sort of give a, a brief overview of what we, of our thoughts. And then we can have an actual, you know, try to have an actual discussion, though of course, that's always difficult on Zoom.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So I think that, you know, as I've said before, that both candidates are very strong. And they, they each have strengths in different areas, different experiences that they, they would bring to this town. With Ray, you know, he's had experience in rewriting municipal code, which clearly we need to take a look at some of our things that are maybe slightly ambiguous and just kind of clean things up. You know, I think that was a good, good thing that he brought to the table. The negative thing that I thought was that he doesn't live in the mountains. And, you know, we have our own kind of mountain culture and an eclectic group of people. And I think it would behoove the person who's taking in this position to understand that culture a little bit more and possibly living our experiences, being here when we're threatened by fire, when we have any kind of issues. Having somebody that actually lives in town and is here, I think, is, is a huge benefit. And that's where I lean towards Miranda as being a local and somebody who's spent a significant amount of time in our quirky mountain town and somebody who also has the educational background. And they both have the educational background. And so Miranda's pursuing her PhD, which I think is, is great. And I like supporting people who are, are furthering their education, especially in, in this very special field. So, you know, it's, it's tough, but I am, I am leaning towards one candidate. I'm not allowed, am I allowed to say which one I'm leaning towards at this point?
Yes, this is discussion. We're not taking any votes. So you can say which way you're leaning and, and then everyone can either, you know, they can agree or try to change your mind.
Okay. So I am, I am leaning towards Miranda. I think there are a few things that are tipped in her favor, especially because I think of the culture in our town, the experience she's had and, and experienced working alongside her over the last few years. I think she's, she's done a great job. She's very responsive and knowledgeable. And if she doesn't know, she reaches out to get the right answer. So I think those are all qualities that, that to me would make a good town administrator.
Thank you, Lindsay. Trustee Taylor?
Yeah, this, this has been difficult, as I think a lot of us are considering right now. It strikes me that the one thing I, that I'm seeing is we have two people, each with excellent qualifications, but each bringing very different backgrounds to the problem. One of the points I noticed about Ray was his focus on process. And while we have a process of our own, my feeling was that he may bring to the town improved approaches to facilitate many of the things Miranda is trying to do here. Miranda's been doing an excellent job. And I look forward to the day that I can refer to Miranda as Dr. Fisher. But my feeling is that this comes down to math. We have two fantastic options. Were I to vote for Miranda, we have one of those options. Were I to vote for Ray, I believe we have both of those options. When we consider the team that could arise with Ray and Miranda, and since our choice in this case has to be around what is best for Netherland, I'm having trouble getting past how formidable that team may be. So I am thinking in terms of Ray right now.
Thank you, Julian. Trustee apt?
It is a, it's a very difficult decision. And I think that both candidates have the experience and talent to do the job. I, I guess that, you know, it's in. I suppose in, in general, you might think that I, we could get two for the price of one in a sense by hiring Ray and having Miranda retained. But there is the X factor of human interaction and the intangibles that could be positive or negative in that kind of situation. So I'm not entirely convinced of that logic, although I can certainly understand the gist of the argument. I guess my impression is that in, in participating in the interviews, it became pretty obvious to me that, you know, Miranda knows the organization inside out, that she's been working here. She knows the boards and commissions. She knows the issues we've been working on in depth. She has shown a tremendous amount of dedication and the ability to handle a lot of information, juggle a lot of different roles, you know, come up with the right information for the board to make good decisions and work very closely with Karen and us. So I guess I would lean towards Miranda because I just see her hitting the gram faster and being at full steam, whereas I think Ray's gonna have much more of a learning curve. And I think particularly on the environmental front, he doesn't have the background that Miranda has hired through working with us. So I think that Miranda, to me, is a better choice for furthering our goals with less, less adjustment and less of a learning curve. Although I am, it's not to say that I'm not very impressed with Ray, and I could certainly work with Ray if that's where the board ends up.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Kums Ismail? Wetting the whistle, ready to talk? Uh-oh, you're freezing up. Might want to, maybe we go no video because we're, there, there we go.
All right, let's, let's try this. All right, let's, let's try this. Um, I am, uh, myself struggling with this decision because I do, I do believe that, um, that Ray Reers, uh, had a, had a stronger application, uh, to begin with and performed, uh, more strongly in the general interview that, that was conducted by the hiring committee. Um, maybe marginally so, but I do, I do believe uh, in some notes I've taken that reformed more strongly in that interview. And from what I understand, um, Fisher, uh, performed more strongly in the interview with staff. And so on that sense, they kind of, uh, you know, scored one point uh, for each other and are somewhat equal in that regard. I, I did also recognize, I have here written down that Ray is highly process based and which I think can be a strength. But, uh, I did also find that Ray Reers did seem to display more rigidity in his approach to administration. Um, I think that, uh, Miranda Fisher's response is demonstrating that she might be more flexible. Uh, I think that Ray Reers also lacks a lot of the specific knowledge to Netherland. And, uh, in some ways did fail to, uh, gain some of that knowledge, when I think there were opportunities to do so throughout the process and, uh, did not do that research. So that was just a little, uh, a little concerning, but, uh, his twenty years of experience, I think, then on top of that in town adminis- in generally in, you know, municipal administration, uh, was impressive. And the things that he's accomplished over that time, uh, made me think that wouldn't be great to have someone who could accomplish those things for Netherland. And so, again, it's sort of one point for one and one for the other. Um, I think that in that sense, uh, I is, is it, is it gonna be, he's gonna require a period of cultural adaptation, uh, to the town of Ned. I think it's very different than the situation in central and certainly, uh, different to, uh, maybe this more process based approach that he's taken. Uh, maybe that's something that we need though, maybe that, 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 that's important for Netherland. But at the same time, uh, that adaptation process is, is risky and it, and sometimes it never happens. So I think that that is something we need to seriously consider. I think that, um, Miranda Fisher is also a risk due to the relative lack of experience uh, careers, uh, in, in specifically in municipal administration. But obviously she has that specific experience of municipal administration in Netherland. And so she would not require that period of cultural adaptation. And that, and she obviously just simply knows the town better and could hit the ground running, uh, a little, a little sooner. Um, yeah, she knows the organization. And I do really, uh, believe that sometimes you just need to kind of knuckle down and invest in your own people. And that can be important, uh, for culture building. That can be important for our staff. Can be important for our residents who are, who, who might, uh, appreciate seeing a familiar face. Uh, so I'm finding it difficult to really, um, uh, make this, make this call. I don't, I don't know that I actually can say, uh, who I would vote for. I am compelled by the idea that we could have both, but I don't want to put any kind of, I don't want to put words in Miranda Fisher's mouth. I don't want to assume that she'll stay with us if she's not given this opportunity. I don't want to assume that she won't pursue, uh, bigger and better things elsewhere, which I think she's well suited for and well qualified for. So, uh, I think the assumption that we would have her regardless, I think is just that, it is an assumption. And if there is no path forward, sometimes people will look elsewhere. So uh, I think it could be a big mistake to lose Miranda Fisher. And at the same time, I think it would be really amazing to have the experience that Ray Reers brings. And yeah, for those reasons, right now, I'm not quite prepared to say who I would vote for.
Thank you, Eric. Um, Tanya, you back? I was gonna read your statement.
I don't, I don't know. Um, do you hear me?
We can hear you right now. Yep, I was gonna read what you wrote, but if you want to just say it.
All right, well, um, I just changed it to hot spotting and maybe it's gonna be better. I don't know. So, um, okay. I, as you know, from what I said in my chat, that I feel good about both candidates, but I'm really excited about somebody new like Ray who offers a different not only, I don't think he would have a hard time catching up on all of our commissions and boards. Um, yeah, there'd be a slight learning curve, but I think with someone of his experience, I, I wouldn't think that would be a reason not to put a new person in a, this position. Because I mean, any qualified person that isn't Miranda is gonna be in that same boat. Uh, I'm excited about his experience with the historical societies, his ability to make some really significant improvements in Central City, um, gotten a lot of grants for this Central City. He's worked with COT on big projects as well. And, um, I think like the unknown is very scary for sure, because we know we're not gonna have a problem with Miranda. She, it's gonna be more of the same, and that's a good thing, um, because everything's going great. But the, for me, the excitement of a new perspective for our town, I feel we could use a big boost. Um, been here, I've been here a long time and, um, I just feel like sometimes things feel a little stagnant. Um, so if, if that, if you guys heard me, that's pretty much all I have to say. As you can hear, I'm in favor of Ray. But obviously, if, if Miranda gets the vote, I would not be upset either. I would just be a little bit that whole disappointment of we'll never really know. But it's a safe disappointment. So there's nothing wrong with playing it safe. But, um, I just thought he sounded pretty exciting. And yeah, he doesn't live in town, which is a drag. Um, but I mean, who knows? Um, if he got the position, possibly he'd wanna stop meeting and live closer. I mean, who knows? Um, I, I, I wouldn't hold, I wouldn't use that as the only reason not to her, myself. That's it. Thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Tanya. And apparently hot spotting does work because we got all of that.
Okay, super. Great, thanks.
So, thank you. I think that's all the trustees. Um, you know, I'll weigh in myself. Um, you know, like everyone is, I mean, a lot of my thoughts mimic the others. Um, we are so extraordinarily fortunate to have these two candidates as our decision. Cause I don't think we can go wrong with either of them. I think they both bring a lot of skills to the table, in some cases, uh, similar, in some cases, uh, you know, complimentary or different skills. Um, I think it was, uh, trustee Kumsesmail was kind of saying, like, where one, one had, uh, the, the biggest strength, there was maybe the weakness for the other and vice versa. So it kind of evened out things that way. Um, and, but I guess for me, I've spent, you know, I've, uh, obviously worked very closely with Miranda over the last year and a half or so since we hired her. And I've seen the growth, the way she's grown into her position and the way she is connected with town staff across departments. And I think that is a, a strong sort of intangible. That's something that can't be brought, that unfortunately Ray can't bring because, you know, he obviously i- is not part of the town yet. And I'm personally a very big fan, uh, both in town government, as well as, uh, you know, my, my other jobs, other positions, of the idea of promoting from within and working to build, uh, a stable of, or a a core of employees that can work their way up and are invested in the town. And that is something clearly that Miranda is. I mean, I think it would be, I think it was, uh, one of the e- letters we got in support of Miranda was very, was brought up the point that, yeah, she went through the schools here. And wouldn't that be something exciting for, you know, to show is that, you know, somebody who grew up in this community can now serve their community. Um, so I, well, I think Ray would be an incredible town administrator. I think he will also have a bit of a, there'd be a lot of a growth curve and getting to know our town, getting to know our commissions, the personalities and working, uh, into our culture. And I think that, uh, we would be able to seamlessly transition into a new town administrator in the case of Miranda Fisher. So, um, that's kind of where I fall. We've now heard from all of the trustees. Um, I, you know, I'm gonna throw this open, uh, open up the, the table to our trustees. We, we don't have a huge amount of time left, but we've all kind of weighed in. If people want to give additional thoughts, additional discussion here for another ten minutes or so before we have to sort of break before our next meeting, obviously, we'll, sounds like everyone is kind of in a position to bring this forward as an action item tonight. We don't want to table it right away and, and move past it yet. So let's, we'll have this discussion during the town board meeting as well. And of course, then we will be able to hear from the public. And, um, so I'm gonna just throw the ta- throw, throw the lines open to the board of trustees if people want to weigh in with more thoughts on what our, what your fellow trustees have said. Or we can chew on, chew on what we've heard and come back in twenty minutes.
Well, um, um, you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, so, so, where exactly does Ray live? Does he live in Denver?
No, he actually lives, yeah, he lives in Arvada. What, what happened is I, he, he lives down at the bottom of Coal Creek Canyon and then you go across ninety-three. And what he said was he lives right in the area across ninety-three. So he lives, um, you know, down, kind of where the ki- I don't want to give away too much information to give away his address.
But I was just wondering, like, how far would his commute be, you know, every day and all that, um, but I, I guess it's not that bad.
It'd prob- it'd probably be somewhere between like thirty-five and forty-five minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
I mean, I've been, yeah. Um, Ray Reers himself suggested that we hire Miranda Fisher, which, you know, as somebody who is applying for the, for the position, uh, saying that, I think is, is kind of.
Um, when did he say that in one of your interviews?
Yeah, he said that at the end.
You're the one breaking up, Fabio Eric.
Sorry, uh, my, my connection is really poor right now. Um,
Yeah, I'm not hearing this is.
But I just thought I would, I would throw that in there then.
Eric, what did you say? I didn't hear that.
Can you guys hear me any better now?
I can now, but I didn't hear what you said previously.
I just said that Ray Reers himself suggested very clearly that if he were making the decision that he would hire Miranda Fisher. And I just wanted to, to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
But I think I could offer a little clarification. This was in the YouTube interview that I saw. Uh, he may have repeated this more than once, but in the YouTube interview that I saw, he certainly did indicate that had he known an internal employee was running for the position, he would not have applied. And, which is essentially saying the same thing. And he's advocating promotion from within, which I think is a good idea. And that's what makes this decision, uh, harder.
Well, I mean, that's a little different than just saying point blank, you should hire Miranda. If I was running for a job and there was an interior candidate, I wouldn't want to run either. Because people do tend to hire from within most of the time.
I mean, I would just note that my calculus in this is is one where I'm trying to isolate myself as much as I can from the people involved and focus more on the attributes. And I'm, I'm, I came to this conclusion considering the math. And, um, it would be awful if that vote were to leave Miranda in a position, and I don't want it, Miranda to answer this question. She shouldn't be answering this kind of a question. It would be distressing, very distressing if the decision that I make leads Miranda to feel more comfortable moving out of Netherland. That would mean that my choice is a very, very bad one. But again, as I say, I'm trying to separate myself from the people, focus on the attributes and that's where the math is bringing me. But if, if Miranda ends up as our town administrator, I will be rejoicing with everyone else.
Trustee Danforth, and, and just to be clear, we would be hiring somebody to replace Miranda, correct, if she moved up to town administrator?
I think that would be a decision sort of, uh, within town staff, where certainly thin out town hall. Um, but that would probably be something that, um, the, you know, new town administrator would have to address is, are there, we have other people, uh, recent hires in town staff who have been taking on more responsibility, who might be able to move up. Or it might be the case of where we need another part or full-time position at town hall to take on the responsibilities of uh, administrative assistant, uh, deputy town administrator.
Or you could, um, even just hire a town clerk like what was done previously. And then if that person were to fit into a depart- a deputy role, you could do that into eventually, you know, you'd have, you'd have options.
Well, I mean, I don't see how we couldn't hire somebody right away with the amount of work Miranda does. I feel like it promoting her and not, and not filling her position almost immediately would be very irresponsible um, of us to leave town such short staff, but so much is going on.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tanya. Other matters of discussion, uh, we've got about fifteen minutes till our next meeting. Or we can, uh, we can take that fifteen minutes to stretch our legs. We can think about what our fellow trustees have said, um, and then come back with further discussion during the action item, hear from the public, and then choose whether or not to, uh, to hold a vote this evening. Does that sound good?
I second that.
Uh, good idea.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, uh, well, then I think we're gonna just probably keep this line on, uh, for the next fifteen minutes, since we have so many members of the public here already and we're all dialed in. Uh, but we will take a little thirteen, fourteen minute break, uh, refill water bottles, stretch our legs, and then we can hold, call the meeting to order in, at seven o'clock. Uh, thank you, all of you for the discussion this evening. Thank you for the, the time and clear thought we've all put into this. I really, really appreciate the work everyone's done and we'll see you again in ten minutes.